This now, this good evening, we are now calling this meeting to order. We could please pay attention to Deputy Mayor Emerson for the invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you are able even from home, please rise.
Thank you, Mayor. Just give me one second. I want to share my screen with everyone here. Want to make sure the volume was up. Okay. One second, please. Okay, this past year has been a difficult one for our city and nation. On top of the murder of George Floyd, ensuing protests and the contentious political campaigns, we've been grappling with an unprecedented pandemic that has seen businesses and classrooms shuttered. Things that we took for granted only a year ago now seem to be in the distant past. 1968 was a similar year with protests over the Vietnam War and the assassinations of Robert Kennedy and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Like now, it was a time in our nation's history when it was easy to lose hope, easy to believe that God was far away and uncaring. On Christmas Eve that year, three American heroes reminded us of God's goodness and His provision for our lives. A message I believe is even more relevant today. Please join me as we listen to the words of Genesis read by the crew of Apollo 8.
We are now approaching Luther sunrise and for all the people back on earth, the crew of Apollo 8 has a message that we would like to send you. In the beginning, God created the heaven and the earth. And the earth was without form and void and darkness was upon the face of the deep. And the spirit of God moved upon the face of the waters. And God said, let there be light, and there was light. And God saw the light. That was good. And God divided the light from the darkness. And God called for light days, and the darkness he called nights. And the evening and the morning was the first day. And God said, let there be a firmament in the midst of the waters. Let it divide the waters from the waters. And God made the firmament and divided the waters which were under the firmament, the waters which were above the firmament. And it was so. And God called the firmament heaven. And the evening and the morning was the second day. God said, let the waters under the heavens be gathered together into one place and let the dry land appear. And it was so. And God called the dry land earth. And the gathering together of the waters called these seas. God saw that it was good. And from the crew of Apollo 8, we close with wishing you good luck, a Merry Christmas, and God bless all of you, all of you on the good earth.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, at this point, we start with the roll call.
Mayor Daily Eastline?
Here.
Councilmember Hiller?
Here.
Valdivia Akala?
Here.
Ortiz?
I'm here on earth.
Emerson?
Here.
Padilla?
Here.
Nager?
Here.
Dobler?
Here.
Duncan?
Here.
And Lether?
Here.
We have 10 present.
And being present, we now move on to the presentations. The first presentation, recognition of the City of Topeka Retiree, City Manager. Take it away.
All right, well, tonight, we're going to recognize eight employees that are retiring in this quarter. The first, whoops, get back to, there we go. The first employee is Bill Cochran, our retiring police chief of 33 years. Our next is Sherrell Kennedy. She worked 27 years in our parking as an office assistant, too. Jason Younghands, 26 years working with the police department, retires as a sergeant. Joseph Hubbard, retiring with 25, after 25 years of service from our fire department as a fire captain. Claude Harrison, retiring from our police department with 24 years of service and retiring at the rank of detective. We have Ross Guff Staffson, 22 years as a police officer with our Topeka Police Department. Phil Wolf retires with 16 years of service to the City of Topeka in our Contracts and Procurement Division and the Finance Department with, as a procurement officer. And then Ed Hurt retires after nine years of service to the City of Topeka in our Utilities Department as a Class IV Water Plant Operator. We thank them for their service to our city. We congratulations, congratulate them on their retirement and they will be missed.
Thank you, City Manager, and thank you to all of these employees who have given so many years of service to our community. Our community is indebted for your service and now you get to enjoy some very well-deserved rest that I'm sure that most of us are eager to have. So now we move on to the second item, which is the Polquency Viaduct, City Manager.
Thank you. Tonight, we have members of the team that has been working diligently on the Polquency Project from both the consultant side with Bartlett and West and Kansas Department of Transportation officials. So tonight, they're going to give you a presentation related to the Polquency Viaduct and bring you up to date on how that project is progressing. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Brian Armstrong with Bartlett and West.
Brian? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity tonight to give you guys an update on something that we're very passionate about and something that's really going to impact our community and downtown Topeka. I am Brian Armstrong with Bartlett and West. I'm the project manager for the design team. Also with me tonight, Greg Gonzalez from KDOT is the project manager. Debbie Tanking with KDOT is currently the Assistant Bureau Chief of Road Design. She was the former project manager of the Polquency Project. She's with us tonight. Kelly Coltola is the Public Affairs Manager with KDOT. She's with us tonight. And Steve Ballman is the Topeka Metro Engineer from KDOT and has also joined us. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen now. All right, so we're gonna give you a quick presentation, kind of an update on where we are now, a year after we started lobbying for this project to be a part of the Eisenhower Transportation Legacy Program. And we would be glad to answer questions throughout or at the end, we definitely could go back through any material and answer questions. With that, I'm gonna let Greg Gonzalez start and kind of give a little background on the history of the Polquency Project.
Thank you, Brian. This is Greg Gonzalez. I'm again the project manager with KDOT, work in the Bureau of Road Design. And just to give you a little bit of background on, on the project, KDOT has really been studying this project for more than 20 years. Back in the late 90s, we, we had initiated a study of the viaduct area that was built in the early 1960s, late 1950s. And kind of with the idea in mind that the life of the viaduct was kind of nearing its end. Therefore, we did do just some basic traffic study that concluded in 1998. From there, the project didn't really go too far. But then back in, in 2008, we picked up the project again with, with a concept study that concluded in 2011. From there, that was a very extensive concept study. It included a public advisory committee for which Karen Hiller, Councilwoman Karen Hiller, had been a part of that as well as other members of the community who are interested and other stakeholders in the downtown area. From there, we had kind of came to and arrived, or we had arrived at a prescribed alignment concept for which we would be get to begin design on. Then when the project or the study concluded in 2011, we went straight into design. As big as the project it was, design did take a little while and we got to about the cent stage at field check around 2015. And from there, though, funding wasn't very fluid. We, we had put the, the project on the shelf and kind of ceased worked on it. But then late last year, the, the project had gotten some interest again from local consult meetings that KDOT had conducted with, with Northeast Kansas and was, had a quite a bit of support from Northeast Kansas. And from there, the, the city had, had provided some interest in providing some, some cost share with the project. And from there, the, the project was selected as Eisenhower Legacy Transportation Program Pipeline Project earlier this year. And so from there now, we're kind of picking up our, our design. We're, we're looking at the, the old design back that was dated 2015 and looking to see if we can make improvements, make things that, that better address the changes that have taken in place, not only with traffic, but also with some of the development downtown and some of the development plans that, that area. From there, I'll pass it back to Brian.
Thanks, Greg. Just a slide on kind of the, one of the reasons for the project. Back in 2015, we split the overall big project into two halves. One is the west half, which is, starts at McVicker and goes to about Fifth Street. The east half then picks up at Fifth Street and goes on to California. Both sides of those projects have bridges that are in, that are nearing the end of their life cycle. But the condition of the viaduct bridges really led to the selection of the west project being the one that was put into the Ike program. So that's the one that was selected. But even, even just to keep it lasting, KDOT has a maintenance project on the viaduct in 2022, just to keep it operating short term. As, as Greg mentioned, we did update the traffic study. There's been a lot of, of changes in the downtown plan, especially with the updated Riverfront South Plan and what the planning department is looking at doing in the future for downtown. And really had been 10 years since the original traffic study. It had made a lot of assumptions that we think were, would, would be different now. So we went back and worked with KDOT and worked with city planning to update the travel demand model, which looked at the, the riverfront land uses and downtown uses and looked at a future 2055 traffic volumes and kind of ran a scenario of what that would look like, made sure the, the lane configuration that we had shown was necessary and really took an opportunity to look at what were their opportunities to reduce cost on the project and be able to maybe put some savings back into, back into the overall project budget. So, so we did that traffic analysis. Again, trying to get current traffic volumes in a pandemic was interesting. We actually worked with a company called Streetlight Data to get cellphone, cellphone vehicle data, which helped us get existing volumes over the past several years to build that existing condition to project from. Main thing that did come out of this analysis, though, is that the viaduct bridges themselves, two lanes for capacity in each direction was adequate. And as a part of this analysis, we looked at realigning the interchange so that we didn't need auxiliary lanes on the viaduct and were able to narrow each of those and save some additional money. So again, our, our current redesign concept, we have two split diamond interchanges. The one on the west project is a split diamond intersection between interchange between Topeka Boulevard and Kansas Avenue. On the east project, it's split between Eighth Street and 10th Street. That's exactly how the east half of this, half of I-70 is laid out currently. There's an additional set of two ramps in the middle. I'm gonna go ahead and switch over to kind of the overall layout of the entire new two split diamond concept. So we'll start with the east just really quickly. It's a split diamond between 10th Street and 8th Street. That's the way it is today. But what we're really focusing on is the west project. We have from Kansas Avenue, essentially, we took the ramps that were at 4th Street and those now are at Kansas Avenue. That led us to, helped us remove one of the two tunnels that were a part of the design project. Those were, we had two different ramps that were weaving together and those tunnels were going to be a long-term maintenance issue and something we're glad we were able to eliminate. And then the viaducts themselves now are two lanes in each direction. Plus, we have 12-foot shoulders on the inside and outside of each of the viaducts. So each of the two new bridges will be about the same size as the existing viaduct. So a lot more room for safety, a lot more room for snow removal in winter. And as you can kind of see, the old viaduct, of course, had the really sharp curve at Second Street. The new viaducts, a flatter curve, a higher design speed, overall safer project. And that's really what we're gonna be able to get the most, the most value out of with the new design. The, also a part of what we're, we're looking at now as kind of the refresh to where we left things five years ago. Now with the new Riverfront South Plan, the Public Works Group and Planning Group have really taken a look at how the functionality of the city street network works now and would work with future developments. They asked the KDOT and the design team to look at a few changes to that 2015 design. One of those is definitely opening up the first and Kansas Avenue intersection. Before it was closed off because of the higher volumes on Kansas Avenue, we had higher traffic projections with the original design. We've done some modeling scenarios, even in that future 2055 traffic, we are able to signalize first in Kansas and keep it open. That does work a lot better with circulation on First Street. We've also made some modifications to First Street down at Harrison and removed that connection. Kept First Street connected internally, removed its connection to the frontage road on, on both sides. One that we're still, still looking at and, and, and just met with the city recently, Fourth and Madison. Our 2015 design basically had Madison cut off from Fourth Street and we had a so we've removed that connection to make this whole parcel more developable with the downtown plan. And we're adding some connectivity back to Fourth and Madison. We're not sure exactly what that looks like. It is one-way north now, past the old Hallmark property. We can at least make that happen. We're looking at other options there. So just kind of a quick layout of, of that. Of course, it does continue on I-70 reconstruction all the way to McVicker, adding an extra lane of capacity through that segment. So I will switch back to the presentation. And just a slide to show that west part of this project. So we have McVicker on the left and Topeka Boulevard on the right. So there is a large part of an interstate project, a, a part of this as well. We're gonna be adding three lanes each direction instead of two. That's gonna add future capacity eventually out to the US-75 interchange is where the, the main future traffic need is and capacity problems are. So this is a big step getting I-70 more capacity out to there. Again, just a picture of the Kansas Avenue Bridge. I know we're working with the, the city on how that, how our intersection potentially works with their updated bicycle master plan, which potentially may be looking at a lane on the bridge for bike lanes and keeping two lanes of northbound capacity and one lane southbound. We also have the, the outside frontage road access. So we're really looking at this in the very near future to see what kind of options work best here and how bike lanes along Kansas Avenue, the entire project from the eastbound frontage road to the westbound to, to First Street, all, all look and connect with the bridge. We talked about some of those other ones. Another one that we're looking at is trying to get a 10-foot shared use path on the outside of the entire frontage road network. So that would add a lot of pedestrian connectivity around. So cost savings, we talked about removing the two tunnels. This is a rendering of what one of them at Sixth Street looked like, but cool rendering, but all the retaining walls and maintenance in the tunnel itself, lighting, all kinds of things were really problematic and eliminating those. Plus, the, the narrowing of, this is a typical section of the new viaduct. So we have four lanes. We have the ability to add the fifth lane back to the inside in the future. If we ever had really high capacity and traffic growth, we don't think that'll happen, but we are planning for it in case. So that's a typical section of the four-lane viaduct. Those two efforts in combination, about 14 million in savings to the total project budget. 11 million of that is to the, the west project that we're focusing on right now. So next steps, we're gonna start public involvement soon and, and are, I think, presenting to the Greater Topeka Partnership this Thursday. So that'll be our, after tonight, our first official public involvement project. And then continuing to work with the city on some of those minor design tweaks, first in Kansas, fourth in Madison, to make sure we have everything that works best and connects best with both projects. Yeah, continue to work on the city bike pad considerations. Our, our big picture goal this spring, updating the right-of-way plans that are necessary for the project. And then KDOT is gonna start that right-of-way acquisition process sometime in, in 2021. We think that could be up to a three-year process for right-of-way acquisitions. So that's one that we want to get started as soon as possible. So with that, we would be glad to entertain any questions you guys might have or, or help clarify.
Any question for the team?
Mayor?
Could we remove the, the presentation so that I could see everybody on my screen? Thank you, Councilwoman Nager, be followed by Councilwoman Hiller. Sorry, I wasn't able to see everybody.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did have a question that I've thought about since. And are we doing any work on the cross streets that will be going over this project as far as as you move more into downtown, like Sixth and 10th and stuff like that? Are we changing anything to those city streets or anything in their design?
So as a part of the current project, it is gonna stop somewhere between Fourth Street and Sixth Street. I-70 ties back in vertically around Fifth Street. So the Fourth Street Bridge will be replaced. We are looking, actually, the city asked for the design team to look at options that would remove the pier that's in the middle of Fourth Street as you drive under. So we're looking at a, a single span that would make that safer and remove that. But the bridges beyond that, Sixth, Eighth and 10th are all into the east project. So not currently with this. We are gonna continue to look at those. As I mentioned, their bridge condition isn't great. And eventually, I mean, we think in a, in a timely manner, 10 years plus or minus after the, the west project, we think the east project probably again due to bridge condition is something that would, would be moving forward then.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Hiller? Oh, Mr. Steve, yes.
Yes, I just wanted to add to that. Brian explained that we're going to be doing some repair work on Polquency Viaduct itself, as well as the, the Fourth Street Bridge to get it forward to the point where we think Polquency as a, as an overall project would happen, at least the, the western portion. We are also going to be doing significant repair jobs on the railroad overpass bridge that's immediately south of downtown, as well as the Adam Street Shunga Bridge or pair of bridges. And those are gonna be much deeper, in-depth projects because we know that's going to have to be kicked down the road. Now, we haven't gotten done really reviewing from a bridge standpoint exactly what we think we have to do to Sixth Street, Eighth Street, 10th Street to get them down that same distance into the, into the future to where the, the other half of this project would actually occur. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. The appropriate picture up again. I know that historically, when, when you're looking from the top down at that design, it's very hard for most of us to tell the difference between what is the Polquency Viaduct and, and therefore above ground and what's gonna happen on the ground. And if you could just kind of draw people through that, including noting Harrison and, and, or Jackson and Van Buren as through streets.
Sure. So what we have shown in orange are the ramps themselves. So eastbound I-70, you'll have an off-ramp down to Topeka Boulevard. Topeka Boulevard, north-south, we're gonna be adding lanes for capacity there and really increasing the capacity of that northbound to westbound movement, which right now backs up pretty far down Topeka Boulevard. So in blue, we're building new parallel frontage roads adjacent to the project. So we have an eastbound frontage road from Topeka Boulevard, Harrison to Van Buren, Jackson and Kansas. In black are the two new elevated viaduct bridges. So each of those two are the two new viaducts. And then westbound, we also have a, a parallel frontage road. So continuing back from Kansas Avenue, we'll have an on-ramp at Kansas Avenue eastbound shown in orange. And then the frontage road will continue on to Fourth Street and, and And then the frontage road will continue on to Fourth Street and tie back into Monroe somewhere in there. On the other side, starting at Madison, we'll pick up a new frontage road parallel with an off-ramp from the interstate. The off-ramp will tie into the frontage road before Kansas Avenue. So from Kansas Avenue, our frontage road will continue to Jackson, Van Buren, and then on to Topeka Boulevard. We are adding the Van Buren Street connectivity under the viaducts. Those don't, that that connection doesn't exist today. And that's really from the riverfront south to the Capitol, which is not shown, kind of the main sightline. So we want to make sure we add that north-south access under there as well as looking at bike lanes and pedestrian considerations as well for that corridor. Jackson also north-south access under the viaduct. So really Harrison is the only place you don't. So we're adding in more connectivity with the frontage road, parallel frontage roads. The parallel frontage roads are also for access management for the interstate. So the overall concept, big picture for the entire project, if there was an incident on the interstate that had to shut things down for some reason, the parallel frontage roads are a backup to be able to get people off and around incidents and back on I-70 without any major detour. So that's been built into the project from from one of the very early concepts. And that's one of the reasons that they continue to be a part of the project. Councilman Hiller, did that answer your question or help some?
I think it does. Just just to clarify, in case people missed it, you know, the the blue and the orange pop out and so you end up focusing on that. But it's that gray line that then gets, that's that's actually the interstate that turns in. The black is the is the viaduct. And then it goes gray again as the interstate keeps going. And all that blue stuff is on the ground, whereas the interstate is up high. So thank you for that and and also the detail about the access.
Additional questions for the team? All right, Brian, am I am I accurate to say that this is a design very similar to Wichita when you're in the downtown business district? That you just get down and you have all those connections and you can get back up onto the highway?
There are some similarities, yeah, to the Kellogg corridor and parallel frontage roads to some of the elevated bridges through downtown. Yep, I think you're right.
Yep. All right. Well, thank you all. If there's no more questions, we appreciate all your work. And most importantly, we appreciate the team of delegates that were hard at work advocating for this project to become a reality. It was, I will never forget, not only was this a long drawn-out, drug-out process, but by the time that we were having the events here in Topeka, they knew that Topeka was in the room. And it was a good thing. It was a good thing and it was appreciated. Everywhere from staff to community members and council members. It was, it was, it was a great day. So thank you so much. At this point in time, if there is no other comments or questions about this item, we move on to item three, which is the consent agenda, if the clerk would read.
Item 3A are the minutes of the regular meeting of December 8, 2020. And applications, there is a list of cereal malt beverage applications that were sent via email today and staff is recommending approval.
What is the pleasure of the body? Councilwoman Ortiz makes a motion. Do we have a second? Councilwoman Nagre seconds. Any comments or questions about the consent agenda? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nagre?
Yes.
Dobler?
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yes.
And having voted yes, the motion carries. At this point in time, we move on to the action items. Action item A, if the clerk would read.
Item 4A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, amending City of Topeka Code Section 3.650, pardon me, 3.65.035, establishing a service fee levy for 2021 relating to the Topeka Tourism Business Improvement District and specifically repealing said original section.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have with us Kurt Young, the director, executive director of the Topeka Lodging Association. He'll make some comments regarding this item. It really is the continuation of a approved previously T-Bid business improvement service fee of $1 per occupied room per night. So with that, I'd ask Kurt to provide any comments.
Okay, thank you, to Andrew Trout and thank you, councilmembers. Kurt Young, Executive Director of the Topeka Lodging Association. I assume you have the document in front of you. So I won't insult your intelligence and sit here and read it tonight. Or I will make a couple of comments. Just kind of pulling out from one or two of the paragraphs in the document that I submitted. Obviously, COVID has had a substantial impact on the revenue stream generated by the T-Bid revenues. In spite of that, we were still able to pay out a total of $219,948.70 to the Downtown Topeka Foundation to subsidize the operations of the Evergi Plaza. As you'll remember, COVID hit about the months before we were looking at doing a grand opening. So everything kind of got a lot of, a lot of emotion in that part of the year when we were finishing construction and and wanting to do everything that we'd planned on. But we got the the fountains commissioned there in in late August. And actually, if you'll remember, we were able to have them running for about a month, six weeks or so before we wound up having to winterize them. One thing we did do as with some of the T-Bid money that was outside of what we would had budgeted, the T-Bid Advisory Board did approve an additional payment of $20,000 in May of this year to go to the Downtown Topeka Foundation to offset some of the drop in in revenue generated by this Business Improvement District. That came out of the T-Bid contingency fund. Looking forward to an exciting 2021, assuming we can get back to normal at some point in time after the first of the year. We've got a lot of big plans. I really don't have anything else to say other than that my proposal to you tonight is to continue the $1 per sold room fee that was originally established. We're not proposing any changes to that and I look forward to your approval.
Any questions for Kurt? Councilwoman Hiller.
I have no questions. I just, Kurt, just can't praise you and your team's work more. I was one of those people that went and just sat on the bench and held up the wall and watched the fountains because I could do that every night all summer. It was fun to see dancers. It was fun to see all sorts of people just hanging out. For those who haven't been there recently, they even figured out that maybe the hot fire was really attractive, but maybe too attractive and and designed some very clever protection for that. And Kirk has been in the middle of or led all of that. And you've hired a good team to do the programming. They're always there. They're on top of everything. We just thank you, thank you, thank you, and I would certainly move to approve.
But we have a second. Councilwoman Ortiz seconds. Comments or questions? Councilman Duncan.
Thank you, Kurt, for being here. I'm supportive of Evergi, always have been. I think it's going to be great for downtown. I look forward to the day when we don't have COVID and can see its full potential. And and I think working with all the people since I've been on the council have been great. So what I'm about to say is no indictment of the place or the people. I was not on the council when this was originally approved. And my concern then remains my concern today, which is why I'm going to vote no this evening. And that's this. We asked the entire city of Topeka and all of the hotels within the city limits to collect something that goes and can only go to one specific project in one very specific area of town. And I've always had concerns with sort of that model and the the fact that they are sort of doing their part in other parts of the city, but can never really access those dollars. And I do weigh that against the fact that having a robust downtown in Evergi Plaza benefits the entire city of Topeka. But I think sometimes we ask a lot of a lot of areas for just one and not just downtown. I think it's happening in some suits. So with that, my issue is not what this is being used for, but sort of the model itself. And so now that I am on the council, I will continue my reservations that I had when I was just a lowly citizen and and vote no against it tonight. But thank you for all the work that everyone at Evergi does.
Additional comments or questions? Councilwoman Hiller.
If we can lead it back to Kurt, just just for the background, I would say that really the in my experience on that was that the hoteliers embraced that project and came to us with the proposal that they supported and further have engaged some of the hoteliers who are outside the city limits to contribute as well. So I, I hear what you're saying, but I don't think that the, you know, instead, this was really a partnership where they got it driven and and the city embraced it. But I don't recall anybody being forced into that spot. And Kurt, you might have more to explain from the background.
Yeah, I think it's it's critical for everybody to understand what Karen has said there. This this evolved from an effort of the Lodging Association in terms of trying to create a public-private partnership that allowed us to to come up with this and actually kick some, kickstart something that had been talked about for a long time. And the hotels really see it in the end as a as a benefit to travel and tourism in the city, which in turn benefits the entire city, whether it's downtown or any place in the city and the county. So I I maybe take exception, a little difference to, you know, characterizing it as as just being committed to downtown. This was not done as a commitment to downtown as much as it was a commitment to the city and county as a whole and to really do something to build up the travel and tourism.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. And I am sure that our esteemed citizens are are enjoying the plaza as well from all over. It's been funny that because of COVID, I haven't been able to participate in the plaza, but it's been great to see what everybody shows me on on Facebook when when they're there and to see the lights. So any other comments or questions?
We'll have some surprises for you here when we open the fountains in the spring, hopefully.
I look forward to being out of the house after spring. Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and support this. And I would say that, you know, I'm very excited about the possibilities that we can see out there. I know during, on a cold night, not that long ago, we had our grandkids and we were driving down Kansas Avenue. We saw that they were showing, I think it was Home Alone or some movie like that. And there were families bundled out there and it was really affirming to see that. I would be remiss if I did not say, I hope whoever is planning the program for the years to come, make sure and and remembers that we are a diverse community and whatever programming that we have out there to make sure that children and youth, teenagers, elders and all ages in between can see their selves reflected in activities that you have out there as well, since they are taxpayers, those adults as well. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Hey, we have a motion and we have a second. There's no additional comments. We proceed with voting.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nagre?
Yes.
Dobler? Duncan?
No.
Lesser?
Yes.
For the record, Dobler was signaling yes with his thumb.
We have nine yes and Councilmember Duncan voting no. Motion passes.
All right, we now move on to item B, if the clerk would read.
Item 4B is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, providing for a non-exclusive franchise to American Medical Response to operate an ambulance service within the city of Topeka until December 31, 2021 and replacing the franchise ordinance codified at City Code Appendix B, Article 11, that will expire December 31, 2020.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, the city and AMR, American Medical Response, bring before you a agreement for one year additionally with our franchise agreement. Chief Greg Duke is here and will make a couple of comments regarding the terms of that agreement. Greg?
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, councilmembers. We have been working on this since late September. We only made one slight change in it on Section 6, which enables us to receive AMR's data so we can use it to our advantage as well. That's in everything from the response times, the type of calls and so forth, because we we have to make sure we're getting the correct data to help us plan on how we're going to move ahead.
Questions for staff? I do know that we have two individuals signed up for public comment. If you want to hear those remarks before we proceed with further discussion. The first person signed up is John Antrim. Mr. Antrim? I see that he's there. Oh, there he is.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
All right, you were thinking this day and age, I'd be able to figure out how to work Zoom meetings because that's all I do with my life.
Hey, it happens to all of us.
I just want to take the opportunity to really not say anything negative about this. But just thank you guys for for considering this and allowing us to continue to serve the the city of Topeka as the primary ambulance service. So like Chief Duke said, we we did negotiate this and we will, you know, support this going forward. So I appreciate it.
Next person signed up to speak is Charles Hubbard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to echo what John said and what Chief Duke said and look forward to continuing our relationship that we have with the city.
All right. We have, yes, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I may have misunderstood, but I hear the fire chief say that there was a change we needed to make to this document. Is that correct? Or is a change already in the documents?
The change is already in the
The change is already in the document. It was done when they negotiated it and is included.
Okay, thank you.
If there's no questions, what's the pleasure of the body?
Move approval?
Do we have a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala, motion made by the Deputy Mayor. Additional comments or questions before we proceed with the vote? See, none. We proceed by voting.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler? Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
Thank you for the heads up.
Okay, we have nine yes.
Motion carries. We now move on to item C, if the clerk would read.
Item 4C is a resolution introduced by Deputy Mayor Tony Emerson, canceling certain governing body meetings for calendar year 2021.
You can see that the Deputy Mayor is trying to do stuff before he adjourns his tenure as Deputy Mayor. I'm just kidding. Deputy Mayor, take it away.
This is simply a, sorry, let me get to the right thing here. This is simply just canceling a couple of meetings next year. I believe one is the primary election, the other is the general election.
All right, do we have a motion? Councilwoman Nager, we have a second by Councilwoman Padilla. Comments or questions? This is a procedural thing that we do every year. Okay, we proceed by voting.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
No.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler? Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Lesser?
Yes.
We have eight yes with Councilmember Emerson voting no.
He makes the motion, he brings the item, and he turns it down. All right, moving on to item D, if the clerk would read.
Item 4D is an ordinance introduced by Councilmember Hannah Nager concerning nondiscrimination ordinances admitting City of Topeka Code Sections 9.20.020 and 9.20.040, repealing original sections as well as creating Sections 9.20.010, 9.20.030, and 9.20.050.
Councilwoman Nager and the members of the Human Relations Commission that have done a remarkable job putting this together. Please, Councilwoman Nager, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This reflects the same document that we were presented to discuss on December 1st, except for it removes the language that was proposed in Section 2 that concerned guidance for the makeup admission of the Human Relations Commission per Councilwoman Hiller's request, because we want to make sure that we're really giving them the direction that they deserve to serve our city as well as possible. This is to update the language in our nondiscrimination ordinance to make sure that we are standing with our citizens of who are being persecuted because of sexual identity, sexual orientation, veteran status, and genital material. And it also updates the language so that we are not only protecting people when it comes to harassment over the telephone, but it updates it to telecommunications so that people who are harassed over social media or other forms of communications or use of the internet are seen in that same light. With that, I move for approval.
We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second? Councilwoman Lesser, seconds. Okay, I do want to say that this is a home rule issue. And this being a home rule issue, I do not have the opportunity to vote for this. However, I am in full support of us passing this. Before we go any further, we do have somebody signed up to speak, and that is Mr. Will Nager. Mr. William Nager?
Hi, I just wanted to be available if there were any questions that came up. I don't necessarily have anything particular to say, but I do want to really quickly, I guess, thank some people who have helped along in this process. This has been going for quite a bit, so I want to start out with thanking then Deputy Mayor Sandra Clear, who offered to help move this forward. My biggest regret of this process is not really running with her there. I thought the procedure was a bit different than maybe it might have been. I want to thank different council people, including like Councilman Michael Padilla, offered and like spoke with me at length with this. I want to thank different organizations like the Human Rights Campaign, different more local groups and individuals who spoke up and wanted to participate in this process. Like Mayor De La Isla said, the Human Relations Commission has been one of those groups that have been involved. So I want to thank them particularly. There have been three different chairs of the commission during this process, beginning with Chair Jamie Crispin, who was very supportive and enthusiastic about this, but also chairs Luisa Strata and Cynthia Hop. Lisa Robertson, the city attorney, has done impeccable work on this. Her attention to detail and quick turnaround has made it very, made somewhat difficult situations a lot easier. And I want to think back to local groups and organizations. There is one in particular that I want to thank. At the beginning of this year, there were a number of people who spoke to this being a priority of the council. One of those individuals was Phoenix Nessmith and put it just really, really well, why this is so important and why this is a meaningful thing. And unfortunately, Phoenix has passed away in this past year, and so they will not be able to see this. And that is something that's very much on my mind, but I want to thank them still because of their eloquence and work in these sorts of issues, not only on this. I know that it can seem ambiguous or maybe like, is this really still an issue? But I assure you that this is a meaningful step. I can remember I lived in Manhattan, Kansas, whenever they passed a similar nondiscrimination ordinance and the sense of relief that is felt whenever something like this is passed and you don't have to worry about some little things, like speaking out in public, advocating for something like this or all sorts of things. That sense of relief, I wouldn't have expected to be so big, but it really impacted me. And I'm going to forever be grateful for the people who worked on that in Manhattan, Kansas, such as Mayor Usheretti. But also, I'm grateful for those who have worked on it here in Topeka, such as Councilmember Hannah Nager. Yeah, I hope that you support it clearly, and thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right. If we have, do we have a motion? Motion by Councilwoman Nager, second. Oh, yeah, that's true. Councilwoman Lesser was the second. Do we have additional comments or questions? Because if not, we proceed with the vote. Oh, Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to ask, we took telephone out and harassment by telecommunications. Does that cover telephone as well? I just, I just want to, okay, I just want to make sure. I will support this, but it's not going to stop what we're trying to do. But I will, I will support it. Because people are going to want, when I, when I look at this, I wish it would stop what we're trying to do here. It'll slow it down, but it won't stop it. You know, when, when, when this has come up before in similar instances, people want us to automatically go after that person and get it and stuff like that. And there's a process, a legal process that it has to go through. You have to make sure and prove that this has happened to you and have good documentation and thusforth. But, you know, we all see today, stuff like this still goes on in the workplace, at home, at schools, everywhere. So I will support it, but, you know, we must remember that. Until we change our hearts and until we change our thinking process that we want to be equal and we all should be equal, that's, that's when it'll change. I commend everybody for all of this hard work, but when I read some of this, it's just not an automatic draw because we pass it. It's just basically supporting how we feel and that we're strong about how we feel regarding this. So I just wanted to say that because I know there's so many things that people want us to do that right now and jump on it right now. I don't have an ill-willed, you know what, against anybody or what they want to do or how they want to feel. But I just, I just felt like I had to say that because, you know, when I hear people say, do the right thing and make sure you pass this and make sure this and this. And again, it's going to show a good, strong support from us, and that's basically what it's going to do. And people need to remember that. Again, I think, I think Hannah and all the people that have brought this forward, but I just felt I had to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Padilla?
Thank you, Mayor. Just very quickly, I want to follow up a little bit on what Mr. Nager commented on. I'm sure, like the rest, like you all have been receiving emails and support of this ordinance. I guess I've been a little irritating to some people in my response to them, but it turned out well because I get, I want you to vote for this, and there's nothing more than that. And I've returned and asked why, because I wanted to hear their reasonings for that. Because it's, you cannot ask or vote for this or don't vote for that. But I'm interested in why people ask us to vote in a certain way. I'm not inclined to just respond to a do it now or don't do it. I want to know the reasoning behind it. And the responses I got were very personal, I think, and very telling about how, as Mr. Nager says, for a lot of people, this will be, I don't want to say a sigh of relief, but it's surely an indication that our city is listening and is taking appropriate actions to make all of us feel comfortable in this community. So I want to thank everybody who's put hard on this, Mr. Nager for your comments, Councilwoman Nager for bringing it forward, for all the members of the HRC. I appreciate their focus and effort on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay, we proceed by the vote.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have nine yes.
Motion carries. There is a lot of joy right now to see that this occurred. I'm sorry I didn't have the privilege of voting for it because of home rule, but my heart is with all of you. We now move on to item five, the non-action items, if the clerk would read.
Item 5A is discussion concerning adoption of the 2015 International Existing Building Code.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have Richard Faulkner here to give us a presentation on the consideration of a new code, that code being the 2015 International Existing Building Code. It is a code that has been identified as needing to be updated or brought to this particular code and approved. And so I'll let Richard explain its purpose and why we want to move to this 2015 code. Richard?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Thank you for the opportunity. Right now, we are using the existing uniform code for existing structures. What we want to do is move to the international existing code, which helps us allow us to use existing buildings in a safer way, but allow them to still be used. At the present time, the city has several codes that we use. Some of the codes are for residential, specifically some of them for commercial, specifically, and a couple of them are combined, commercial and residential. This code will just be specifically utilized for commercial structures. When using it, when people, when developers try to use existing buildings and change the use of that building, having them comply with the International Building Code is quite, most of the time, they would just have to tear the building down and start from scratch. By using the existing building code, we're able to work with them to repurpose that building, make it safe for occupancy, and keep a building up in our community, which is beneficial to the community and the developer and our citizens. So by us using this code, it's going to be very beneficial. We also use the 2015 Life Safety Code that helps us with exiting and things of that nature, also a safety feature in the code. This code was reviewed by the Building Board, Fire of Appeals. We have a very diverse group on the board. As you can see, it's made up of contractors, engineers, and architects. So we went over the code and discussed those things that were important to each one of those groups. Also, Fire Marshal was part of it. They had a city attorney part of it. Plan review staff was also a part of this process. We started the process in June of 2018 to get to where we are today. We also looked at some surrounding communities to see if they were using the code. Some are, some aren't, but we would be the only one that's using the 2015 code. Some are using the 2018, but some communities don't vet the code. They just adopt it on its entirety. I like the fact that we do sit down and go through the code and make sure that what we're doing works best for our community. The Board of Appeals, Fire Appeals, is recommending adoption of the 2015 Existing Building Code with amendments. Two notable amendments I like to point out. Some of our buildings downtown, they're interconnected, and we did not adopt the seismic reinforcement portion of the code. and we did not adopt the seismic reinforcement portion of the code. Uh, cause if someone came in and the middle building was being, uh, repurposed and the two buildings on the side of it wasn't being repurposed, and you put the seismic stuff on the middle building, it's, 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 it's no value because the other two buildings on the side are gonna bring them down anyway. So we did not adopt the seismic port, portion of the, uh, existing building code. Also, uh, the floodplain regulations, uh, the city has pretty good floodplain regulations that address, uh, what FEMA wants us to address. So to go through that and we already had a code that addressed it, we're not recommending adopting the floodplain regulation. Uh, so staff supports the recommendation by the Building Fire Board of Appeals to adopt the exist, 2015 Existing Building Code.
As you all know, this is not an item for vote this evening. This is for us to be able to have a heads up. Um, this will more than likely be in our next council meeting, which will be next year for discussion. But Mr. Faulkner is here to answer any questions that you may have, as well as City Manager, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Faulkner, first of all, thank you for your presentation. Uh, I did have a question. I know our practice has been, um, to never adopt like the latest code. Uh, however, here it looks, uh, I was struck by the slide that shows the neighboring cities that we would now be kind of the odd man out. We'd be the only one not using the 2018 out of our nearest, um, what I call, I guess, our peer cities.
Hmm.
And I, I, I just wondered, first of all, there's, I doubt there's probably a lot of differences, but I know, you know, as a contractor, what you run into is you get to, you know, you maybe work in Lawrence, Manhattan, Leavenworth and stuff. And stuff you do there, then you come here and it, you know, doesn't, doesn't track sometimes. And I just wondered, would you give any consideration to maybe looking at the 2018 and seeing if there were just some minor changes? Maybe adopting that instead of this, so that we lined up with our neighboring cities?
Sure, I could take it back to the board and, and, and see if that's what they want to do. Uh, as I noted, we started this review in 2018, so that code was out at that time, just coming out. So that's why we didn't, uh, address it, but sure, I'll take it back.
Thank you.
Councilman Duncan.
So, so I had a similar question and I guess it would see, same thought. I mean, my question would be, I assume somebody out there has done an analysis of the differences between the 15 and 18 code. So it seemed like you could just find that, look at what those differences are and then do a review of if, if it was okay, if those were okay or, or not, as opposed to having to redo this entire process just for the 18, 18 code. I would think those are out there. So yeah, I had this, I had a similar question. It would just be interesting to get some feedback as to if the group thought we could take a look at that and if it's a simpler process than it sounds at, at first blush.
Yeah, most of the codes, uh, they generally do that when they do the new code, they set out the changes and set them aside. So, uh, like I said, well, well, I'll take it back to the board and discuss it and see what they say.
Councilwoman Heller.
Thank you, Mayor. Did you by chance, if I can ask, I, I guess, Mr. Faulkner or Mr. Feiner, whichever, run this by the Landmarks Commission?
No, I, I didn't. Uh, I read it by the designers and the contractors. I didn't run it by the Landmarks Commission.
I, I would encourage you to do that. I mean, they are the folks, but both on the residential and commercial side who are passionate about preservation and who have been involved as, as the people who were considering or as the people who are or advise people who are considering purchasing and renovating those buildings. And, and I don't know that it would take much time, but to give them the chance to look through it and see if anything caught their eye that they were aware of that had come up in these processes, um, I, I think would be a good idea. Uh, so I would encourage that. Otherwise, kudos. I know that as we've worked through these different plans, you've laid out the whole list of all of them. And this one was on the list to, to roll up. And so it's, uh, it's exciting to see it sync up. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions or comments from the team? If you do have any additional questions that you did not have a chance to address, Mr. Faulkner and Mr. Feiner are always at your disposition. Uh, make sure that you send your emails to City Manager and, um, and then we can make sure that we get those funneled and you get those answers before next year when we have the meeting in which we will approve, uh, this document. That being said, we are now moving on to the public comment. Uh, there is no one signed up, uh, for public comment this evening. Um, is that correct? I'm just looking at my email. I, I'm double emailing here. I have my phone for the emails and to look at the screen, but just confirming that nobody signed up last minute?
Yes, Mayor, that is correct.
Okay, um, then we move on to the announcements. We start with the clerk.
There is no preliminary agenda for next week.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three fire department items tonight that they brought to me. Um, the Topeka Fire Department has received a, uh, $5,000 grant through the Hartford to purchase informational materials on fire safety education for the public. So we're excited about that. Um, also, the Topeka Fire Department is a finalist to be one of 250 city fire departments in the U.S. to be part of the National Fire Protection Association's initiative in developing community risk reduction programs. That's a mouthful, but, um, tell you that that is something that would provide additional research regarding our risks that we have within our, within our community. So if we're able to be successful in being selected, uh, that'll give us, uh, a lot of research about our risks and, and be very helpful for us in the future. Also, uh, you remember, uh, Fire Lieutenant Matt Free was, uh, provided the State Fire Marshal Award, the Tom McGahey Award last month. Um, but he will also receive the Topeka Fire Department Medal of Honor for his actions August 4th, 2020, for the rescuing of the two-year-old infant from the burning structure. So passing that along and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager. Um, it is the last meeting of the year. And, um, I did want to say a few words. The first thing that I want to say is I want to acknowledge that I'm sure that every single person on this body, as well as those of you who are home, are excited that 2020 is coming to an end. Um, 2020 has been an extremely difficult year. Um, we have seen both civil unrest, uh, an election, and we have seen a pandemic take place in our communities. And the one thing that has been very clear as this process has occurred is that the cause for justice is still very active. Um, we all may have different ways of going about it, but I think that this body specifically uh, is very committed to ensuring that we have a more just, uh, community. Um, and it was very apparent that our country and our communities are divided. Um, it is time for us to start exemplifying the values that make us Americans. It's time for us to take maybe these next few weeks where we no longer have to see any more commercials, uh, telling us that we should think differently or that we should be for one group or another. And to start thinking of the fact that our life is fleeting and now more than ever in this community, we are seeing the impact of a virus that is reminding us that our lives are fragile. When we started this, I remember saying to the team that we were in the middle of one of our greatest challenges and that although we were seeing things be extremely difficult in New York, um, if we did not take care of each other and take personal responsibility for ourselves and for our neighbor, we were going to start suffering and our communities were going to start feeling the impact. And I can tell you that we're here. Um, the Incident Command Team that has led the COVID incident is a phenomenal group of individuals. And I cannot end the year without acknowledging Linda Oaks, who recently is retiring from the Health Department. Out of the four of us that are always in communication, uh, Linda Dusty Nichols, who was the Incident Commander, Dr. Baccino and myself. Linda has been our link to everything health department related, making sure that we had all the latest information, making sure that our community had follow-ups once they had found out that they had COVID, uh, making sure that they were able to, to have what they needed. And I can tell you that in the, in the last few weeks, uh, the one thing that we have not been talking about aside, even though we've been talking about the trauma, uh, is the trauma that our medical personnel is going through right now. Uh, this situation has changed all of us, um, and especially those of us on the inside, uh, that are getting the daily reports of the number of deaths, that are getting the reports and all of us that are starting to see people pass away. Linda, thank you. Thank you so much, you and Jill, for everything that you've done for this community, for serving us so well and so selflessly. Um, for, for having, uh, a two or three-person wedding via Zoom, uh, for making sure that you were being the example that you wanted your community to follow. At the same time that I want to thank Linda for her work, I would be remiss if I don't mention the, the giant Gianfranco Baccino. Dr. Baccino had probably one of the most difficult, difficult jobs in this country, which was to be a health officer, trying to work and congeal both with government, with business, with the medical industry and with our citizens. And in this process, Dr. Baccino, while he was selflessly, because by the way, his full-time job was not to be health officer. His full-time job is at KHI. He didn't have to do this. Dr. Baccino gave himself to this community, received threats and did not receive the amount of support needed sometimes in order for him to effectively keep our community safe. And to that, I want to say, Dr. Baccino, thank you. Thank you for everything that you have done to ensure that our community, above all things, understood what we had in front of us and how you encouraged all of us as a community to come together. In this regard, making a virus political, making sure that we were considering, yes, our economy, because our economy matters. And our small businesses will have support from us. Our small businesses will have support, um, from the federal government and we will work together to support our businesses. But we cannot gain back the lives that we're losing. And Dr. Baccino had that in front of him on a regular basis. I thank you for your service to our community. I thank your wife. Thank you for enduring all the difficulties that you did for all this time. Um, with that, Topeka, it's time for us to put aside our differences. The vaccine is around the corner and we, God willing, God willing, as we are celebrating some, the Festival of Lights in Hanukkah, uh, some of us will celebrate the, the birth of Jesus through Christmas. Some will celebrate Kwanzaa, whatever you celebrate. It's a time of reflection. It's a time in which we are called to be grateful. And I want to call on all of you, number one, first and foremost, to be grateful for being American. Be grateful for having the privilege of living in the country that we're in. That even though we have our differences, we still have the right to have those differences and to express them. It's time for us to come together the same way that we came together in other times of trial. It's time for us to be known for radical kindness because we're loving our neighbor and because we're selfless enough that we're taking care of each other. Could we do that? Could we change the narrative of 2020 and bring in 2021 together? I believe that we can. I believe in all of you. And although it has been a difficult 2020 and there has been everything from campaigns to everything else that has happened, there is no greater pride that I carry than to call myself your mayor. Even for those of you that don't approve of me, I still serve you with dignity and with kindness. Thank you for the privilege of me being able to do so. Thank you to my council members. Uh, you are all phenomenal advocates in your own right for the things that you believe in. And I am grateful for all of you, for your engagement in your community and for not cowardying in the face of all of the challenges that we face this year. God bless all of you and thank you. Happy New Year, Merry Christmas and happy holidays to you all. Uh, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Well said. Um, yeah, who would have thought last year in January that me being Deputy Mayor would not be the worst thing about 2020? So, uh, a couple of things. First of all, a serious thing and then I want to end on, on a high note, but, um, a lady, a great lady in our community named, uh, Rachel Escobar passed away this past, uh, Saturday. Um, and even though she went to Topeka High, she was a graduate of Topeka High School, uh, she was just, yeah, there I see. Oh, oh, uh, she was just, those of you guys who knew her, um, you know, just, uh, just a beacon of, uh, positivity and grace in our community and just a great, great lady. Her, her son, Pat, was one of my best friends in high school, uh, just a great family. So, um, I'm really sorry for, uh, Chris and Pat and John, uh, her husband, who are left behind after 58 years of marriage. So, uh, it's just a, just a fantastic lady. Uh, and now just to end, um, I wanted to just give a shout out to, um, and I guess, um, I, I sent an email to, um, uh, to Bob and golly, this is terrible. I can't think of Bob's last name right now. Um, I've worked with him for 35, 30 some years. You'd think I'd know his last name. Uh, Bob Sample. I sent him an email earlier this week because, uh, I think we all in the council saw some stuff going back and forth about the, um, Eighth Street getting open so the, um, the parking garage could get back open. And I just wanted to say that was a phenomenal job done by our utility department. I guess, uh, uh, Sylvia did a lot of the work, not, not Sylvia Ortiz, but, um, yeah, not, not Sylvia Ortiz, um, but just Sylvia and the utilities, uh, group really appreciate you guys kind of having nerves to get that done. I, I know it's not quite open yet, but, uh, phenomenal job and they've, they've really been kind of knocking down the park lately. So really appreciate everything they've done and, and all of our city staff. Um, with that, uh, Merry Christmas to everyone across the city and, uh, see you guys, talk to you guys later.
Councilwoman Padilla.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first I want to do a little commercial if I may. You know, uh, I know a lot of us have been hearing the, uh, predictions of what could happen coming January 1st with regards to homelessness and people being evicted from their homes and looking at 20, not at the end of 2020 as being a relief, but maybe fearing 2021 as being an extension of a lot of the suffering that has been going on. And I made a phone call earlier this week to staff and I just wanted to check and see how we as a city have been preparing and working to, uh, mitigate any of those, uh, concerns here for the citizens of Topeka. And I was very pleased again to be reassured that we have hardworking staff like Corey Wright, uh, Monique Gaudet, Rochelle, uh, Vega, uh, working very hard. They told me they've been taking in all kinds of applications, uh, for relief and public assistance for rent and utilities. And I want to really thank them for being uh, city employees anticipating what's coming, working hard, uh, putting in the extra time. I know that they're even working out of their department to help the others. As I asked, do you need more staff? Well, I've been volunteering, you know, so they've moved themselves over to try and do that work. So I really appreciate how well they are courting this, coordinating this effort because, uh, we don't want to wake up, uh, January 1st and say, well, what, what's been done? Because it is being done already. I compliment City Manager because I know that he has been following this and has been, uh, directing that work and I think that's extremely important work. And then I would like to say thank you to the citizens of Topeka. It's been tough. Um, we haven't all seen eye to eye on a lot of things, but I think by and large, really, I am proud of the way City of Topeka has responded to the, um, challenges that have come their way. Uh, with regards to, uh, any of the, uh, civil unrest and, and inequities that we've faced. We've responded in a way that is thinking and caring and not attacking. I know that we all go through those stages because we want to blame someone. I know that we all go through those stages because we want to blame someone. But before we do that, we need to look at ourselves and ask what we're doing to make it different and quit asking others to make it different for us and join in and offer some help. And I've been pleased that in my last year, uh, this last year, serving on the, uh, the council, I have met some really wonderful people who really have taken that to heart and they've asked me, well, what can be done? And I'll ask them, well, what would you help us do? And they've stepped up to kick in and try and help the city find solutions to a lot of their problems. I want to say thank you to my colleagues and to the mayor, uh, for being a real leader at a tough time. Uh, that's where everybody gives you the most criticism, is when it's a tough time. It's easy to be a mayor when everything's going your way. And it didn't go anybody's way this year for very long. But I think myself, I am really appreciative of having the body that I sit with now because they have been supportive, uh, of the mayor. They have been supportive of staff work. And I think they have been extremely responsive to the citizens of Topeka. And, and so for that, I want to thank my colleagues. I feel that it was a privilege to serve with you. I'm glad Tony and Mike Lester have recovered from their bout of COVID. And I hope that all of us keep ourselves safe, keep our families safe and enjoy the holidays. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Councilman Nagar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I want to say thank you again to all of our new retirees and a very special congratulations, um, especially to our retiring police chief, Chief Cochran. Speaking of a very difficult year, oh my goodness, that man was a rock and I very much appreciate his leadership in our community. Thank you, Chief. Um, I also wanted to say, um, Councilwoman Medea has teased me in the past for having the right shoes or the correct thing. And so tonight I have my special Topeka Pride mug. Um, I am so appreciative of the support that our council has shown our LGBTQ community in Topeka. This is something that has been in the works for a long time, longer than we have even talked about, uh, non-updating our nondiscrimination ordinance. And it is so important to remember that we have so much need in our community and whatever support we can offer our brothers and sisters is, we need to go ahead and support that. And whether it's staying at home and celebrating over Zoom, what, um, lending a helpful hand to those who need extra assistance right now due to loss of jobs or income, or if it's just being kind to somebody who needs a mask, make sure that in this holiday season, you are being the person that we all know we need to be in this very difficult time. Um, I am immensely privileged to be a white, college-educated female. I have so many advantages and I am so, my life is so enriched by the fact that I can do things for others that don't have the same advantages that I do. I just want to wish everybody a happy Hanukkah, a Merry Christmas, a happy Kwanzaa. And I am hoping that 2021 is bringing us up into an upward trajectory. Thank you to my fellow council members, to the, um, city staff and to Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Dobler.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, sorry for my technical difficulties. One disadvantage to your kids growing up and moving out is you lose your tech support, so. I was, I was able to dig out a, uh, an iPad that seems to be working. Just wanted to say a couple of things. First of all, Deputy Mayor Emerson, I appreciated the opening, Apollo Eight, nineteen sixty-eight. It really, it really does have a deep message there. I hate to admit that I'm old enough that I remember that happening, so, but, there were some bleak years in the late sixties and it, uh, it, it at least lets us know that we can get through the difficulties we're facing right now because we've done it before. I want to say congratulations and thanks to Chief Cochran. You've, you've had a great impact on, on this community. Uh, and it is, is appreciated. I want to thank my fellow council members. It's been a, even though it's been a tough year and a difficult year, certainly everybody has stepped up and that's been, been great to see. Thanks to constituents in District Seven, uh, as well as the rest of the city. Have a Merry Christmas, stay safe, and we'll see you next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I, I just end the year with a simple thank you to our staff here at the city. And, and I don't just mean the folks who work in City Hall. I mean, every single member of our, of our city staff who particularly this year have been on the front lines of a very tough pandemic and men, at times, some of them have had to put themselves in quarantine, have contracted COVID while on the job. Have had to deal with frustrated and, and angry and, and anxious citizens in many, many different situations. And the majority of you, we always recognize, if you did the calculation of your per hour pay, it's like many of us, you are overworked and you are underpaid and we know that and we work every year to improve that. But my, my thanks goes out to every single one of you who have, who have done everything you can, particularly in a tough year with budget crunches and other, other issues in front of you to keep this city moving forward and make our job here at the council much easier so that we don't have to worry about some of the nuts and bolts operations and can, and can help work on the bigger things and make your job easier. So I just want to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays to all of those folks and everyone else, and thank you very much.
Councilman Lesser.
Yeah, not, not a whole lot. Uh, thank, thank you, uh, Councilwoman Padilla. As, as Tony can say, uh, Tony and I were talking the other day and, and, uh, this stuff is tough, man. It's, it's, uh, still only about seventy-five percent. Talked to Barry Ficker today and, and him and I got it the same day and, and Barry and I are about the same position, so it's, it's, it's a tough go. And, and, uh, my wife may be correct that I am the worst sick person in the world and have man flu, you know, worse than anybody else. I may have to agree with her with that, but, um, nevertheless, um, yeah, there are some good things though, you know, tough year, some good things, you know, um, gonna miss, uh, Chief, uh, Cochran, thank you. Honored to, to be able to work with you and, you know, the great thing about, you know, this job for me is, got to meet some people that now I, I can call my friend and, and, uh, I never would have probably got to, to have that opportunity before, so, um, thank you for everything in a tough time and, and thank you for your friendship. It means, means a lot to me and will continue to do so. Nobody else mentioned it, but while Neil was off, I did talk, we did talk to Eric Blankenship in IT. We're getting you a gift card for, uh, lessons on, uh, computer operations and stuff for the new year. So, I mean, you ought to be set for the whole entire year next year, um, without having to have these difficulties. So, uh, Merry Christmas, um, and, uh, thanks to everybody for, for any help that you've provided me, especially while I was gone.
Councilwoman Heller.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to do another shout out to Will Nagar and all the people that work so hard on the ordinance. Will will tell, will tell you that he's not, he doesn't claim authorship of that ordinance, but he sure worked hard for years, literally, to pull the pieces together and the people together. And, uh, when I think of Councilwoman Ortiz's comment about changing hearts, maybe I'm the only one, but not only was there tremendous support for the passage of this ordinance, but there was no objection. And that is a community change. I, I heard none, not one. And that is phenomenal community heart and change. And I, we'll see how it all plays out. I think we're all tired of all the excitement and changes this year. But wow, and thank you, Councilwoman Nagar, for shepherding this through the, um, the final stages. Um, it, it's really momentous to see that happen. And I think overall, it, I think we are tired. It, it has been a year of such ups and downs. But you look at not only this ordinance tonight, for instance, but all the people that have stepped forward, done brave things, the mayor running for Congress and doing a great job with it. Really outstanding personally and, and representing our community. We, yes, we had civil unrest, but there were people, young people and people new to community advocacy that stepped up for the first time and did a phenomenal job in, in speaking out for the, for things that they believed in and, um, and, and bringing the, the issues out that needed to come out. And something if you recall is that sort of unexpectedly, we, um, we christened the Evergy Plaza with, um, an event that was put together by high school students. With the support of Chief Cochran and his officers and a lot of folks from the community. We had unexpected events that turned out really well that are, they're going to stand us in good stead for a long time. COVID as well, as, as horrible as it's been, it's created that community conversation that Councilwoman Padilla talks about. Surely we'll be stronger for it, but oh my. And, um, I, I think of the, all the donors that contributed to Evergy Plaza that opened. I mean, over a million dollars raised for that. And similarly with, with, um, with the COVID issues and the businesses. Remember that, that, um, Mr. Hunsiger and, and I don't know how many others raised over seven hundred thousand dollars in private money to help businesses and employees look back to this community. And meanwhile, we kept all those committees going. Our council members are now serving on twice the number of committees we were at the beginning of the year, doing good work. Some of them have wrapped up their work and much of it is continuing into next year. The strong commitment on the part of, of the, um, council members that are involved. And, um, certainly City Manager has helped wave us through all these changes and so on and connecting the staff in. Again, um, to keep all those, all those things moving during these, um, really incredible times is, uh, is to everyone's great credit. So I wish a happy holidays to everyone, the council members, the staff, our partners in the community and, um, and the citizens. And of course, everybody got the email today. We thought we were done, but I guess we're gonna all roll in for another meeting next week anyway. So we'll, we'll see how that goes and thank you, everyone. It's my privilege to work with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just blessings and happy holidays and a happy new year to all city employees, all those, um, that I serve with, all those that serve in the front lines as essential workers to those being treated with COVID. Worldwide, we're at over one million, six hundred and forty thousand deaths. I think we're over three hundred thousand in the United States. And while we know that the vaccine is, uh, being implemented and given as we speak, there is still a long row, a, a long road ahead. I, like Mike, think that, uh, I go into 2021 with a sense of relief that 2020 is over. Yet with a semi-sense of dread that things are not completely over. And not only with COVID, but in the real fallout that we may see with the effects economically and with a changeover in administrations. For those that are feeling despair, for those that may be feeling hopeless at this point, please know that you need to reach out for help. For those that feel that they're in a whirlwind and, uh, just needing someone to talk to, those services are here for you in Topeka. And I would say there's something very special happening on the winter solstice this year. On December, uh, twenty-first, a Christmas star that has not happened, I think, for over five hundred years. Jupiter and Saturn or, I don't know if they're doing a love dance. I think those are both male energies. So who knows? Maybe they are, but, um, you know, it's going to create this really beautiful star and I'm just hoping and praying that we'll be able to, uh, I'll be able to have my family around and we'll be able to, uh, witness it. Find hope where you can, find love and laughter where you can and, uh, all be blessed. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I will just say ditto to everybody's, um, comments. I just wanted to tell Karen that Scott Hunsicker was a Topeka High Trojan, nineteen eighty, he graduated. I wanted to throw that out there because Trojans, they do good things. They do great things. We just had, uh, one of our best coaches, Willie Nicklin, that coached for years. They called him Willie White Shoes because he always wore white shoes with whatever he had on. Uh, great coach, great coach. And he just passed away, so, um, I would just ask everybody to remember those that are grieving, um, uh, the Barta family. Merle Keeling, who was a big pillar, um, in Topeka. He used to tease me that he taught me how to read. The Keeling family, uh, called Knowlesons Go Out to them. But there's, there's a lot of Trojan spirit. I, I do have a gift for Tony um, so that he can get on board with some great, great people. But if we can remember, um, it's, it's not always glamorous for everybody, so just keep those in, in your prayers. Um, this week at our Public Health and Safety Meeting, Sergeant Clam talked about how they were going to go out and give, um, boots and some coats and some blankets out to the homeless. So if we can just remember those that are less fortunate to us, I thought that was awesome. Um, and the children. I think that, um, that would be great. I think we have a council that is very giving, not only to our city, but, but to our state as well. I also wanted to, uh, shout out the street department, um, because they do work very hard. I spent about a half an hour with them out there today. Um, and they're already concerned about the roads and the conditions and, and their minds geared to that. And they just don't get enough credit for credit to do, so I wanted to, to, um, give credit to them as well. Again, I just want to say Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to, to the city staff, to Chief Cochran. Job well done. And also, if, if there's a lot of basketball games, good Topeka High Trojan games that you can stream and watch the kids play. Um, and I would be happy to get you those links. It's kind of cool to see them play. I, I, I know the Scots were playing the other day. I think they got beat, but, um, anyway. There's, there's some good basketball going on, so, um, let's just not forget the kids of tomorrow, our future. Thank you, Mayor. And Mayor, Merry Christmas to you. Hopefully you can get some R and R, well-deserved time. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I forgot to mention the chief. Hey, chief. Uh, super Papa, Grandpa, uh, extraordinaire of two amazing grandbabies. They're beautiful. Many in the community may not know this, but the chief was not just our chief. The chief was the people's chief. Chief was hired by a committee of people and our community was in a very divided time. It would be crazy for anybody to ever dream of becoming the chief of police in this community during this time. And, um, we had a choice of many people in our community unanimously. I have never been lobbied so hard to hire a person, uh, than I was when I was asked to support the hiring of Chief Cochran. You handled this job with dignity, with grace, with love, and more importantly, with humility. You embraced, uh, our, our kids that were telling you that they were hurting. You and I got a lot of heat when you marched alongside the Black Lives Matters movement. And it's okay, but you did it with grace because you were trying to exemplify the height of the department that you had created and that you forged. And, um, and you did it because you had pride in your people. And because you had pride also in your community and understood the needs of other members of our community. Those are things that we don't see in many chiefs. But Topeka was blessed to have you. Chief, thank you. You are a blessing to our community. I pray for you and for your family often. Now you get a chance to bounce babies on your lap. Um, and, uh, enjoy the retirement that you so deserve. Thank you for being our chief. Thank you for being Topeka's chief. Thank you for being an example for this country. Because perf says that you're an example for this country and many others do as well. And, uh, I'm going to ask Chief to say a few words because this is the last meeting that he'll be talking with. Before I do that, I'm going to say also to my, my compadre, uh, Tony Emerson, who is our Deputy Mayor. This is not your last Deputy Mayor meeting, but man, what a year for you to be Deputy Mayor. Thank you for your service. Um, you rocked. Thank you. And you didn't die in the process. Look, you see, you survived, you know, I, I didn't kill you.
Thank you, Mayor. It was a privilege to serve.
Chief, would you like to say a few words to your community?
Well, Mayor, I just want to say, uh, thanks for those words. It means a lot and, uh, having the support of City Council, um, was extremely important. And I appreciate that. And, uh, City Manager, I thank you for having the faith in me.
Thank you, Chief. We love you.
Thanks.
All right, guys. This is an emotional, uh, Happy New Year. See you guys next week on Jado, but from the council, have a blessed, blessed end of 2020 and let's start 2021 with a positive heartfelt bang. We adjourn.